I will call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM, Dunsmere City Council on December 8. Councilman Art, would you like to do this in the flag salute?
My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag by United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God.
We're just raw.
Tonight, we have a special presentation and update regarding the U.P. cleanup.
We have Eric Holder in place of Anna, and he will be presenting on the update that we typically get in person, but I can commend you for not venturing out up here as they have the chains on the interstate now. So, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, initially, I was feeling a little sore throat. That's why I didn't come, but apparently I made the right choice with the storm. But yeah, so my name's Eric Loughlin. I'm a public information officer with California Official Wildlife, and California Official Wildlife's role in this response is we're part of the Unified Command, but we're there to monitor for potential wildlife and environmental impacts. The other state agency that's involved that's part of the Unified Command is the State Water Board, and the Water Board and the EPA are the agencies that ordered this cleanup to begin with. So Fish and Wildlife is there. We have a scientist who's been on scene, kind of monitoring the river, you know, making sure there are no impacts to wildlife, but that's our primary role. As far as my role, I'm the public information officer for the incident. You know, typically you'll have a PIO that, from whatever agency, it could be a state, federal agency that kind of serves that role. So Anna and I have been handling the public information and the liaison officer roles. But I don't have a big update to give on the response. You know, I'm not a technical expert, but I can give you the basics, and if you have questions that I can answer, I can take them back to the Unified Command. As you know, there's multi-agencies that are leading this response, and so different agencies have different roles. But I can tell you that we've continued the excavation directly behind the retaining wall that's along the river, and we're excavating down to about 10 feet, and all of that contaminated soil has been so far trucked out to a waste disposal site out of county. And we have been building a stockpile to put that soil in the south part of the yard, and that's now complete. So we will start, you know, storing some of the contaminated soil that we pull out in the south yard. Obviously, with the storms, we've been taking, you know, not only precautions but also active measures to keep the rain from impacting that soil. We don't want any kind of runoff to go in from anything. Sorry about that. Hold on just a second. Working from home. Josie, stop! Sorry. So we have that. All right. Hold on, let me put him in the bedroom real quick. Sorry.
This must be the wildlife part.
Yeah, if anyone knows the many pinchers, they definitely howl and bark quite a bit. So yeah, he should be fine now, so I can continue. So the stockpile area in the south rail yard is now complete, and the trucking will begin to store some excavated material in that area. Apologies. Josie, stop! Josie!
Stop it, Josie.
Probably gonna make YouTube or something like that. Hold on, give me two minutes, and I'll put him in the other room.
Is Josie a dog or a person?
Valid question.
I think it was muting him, but it was so loud, it was hanging out.
Okay, so I'm almost done here, so bear with me. So we're gonna start taking some of that contaminated soil and storing it in that yard to be trucked out. But right now, with the storms coming in, we're definitely focused on, you know, covering up a lot of that soil, so we don't have any kind of runoff into the river. The project's probably gonna go offline at the end of the year, and then restart again once we get some better weather in the springtime. And one of the things we're working on to get ready for the spring operations is creating a dewatering system, and what that will do is basically collect some of the groundwater, not water from the river, but the groundwater as we go in and dig out more soil, and that groundwater is gonna be contaminated. So we're creating a water treatment system to actually treat the water before it goes back into the river. And so that requires a permit from the State Water Board, and we're working on that. That's kind of the plan for when things start up in the spring. Yeah, and as you've noticed, there's more truck traffic through town. We're maintaining the signs posted along the routes notifying times and dates of increased truck traffic and no parking zones as needed. And like I said, we're probably going to, you know, pause operations here at the end of the year, and then when things get better weather-wise and warmer, we'll definitely start things up. So that's pretty much the update I have. If there's any questions that I can answer, I can take those. If not, I'll, you know, I'll take them back and get them answered after the meeting.
All right, are there any questions? In council?
Thank you so much for taking the time today.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
And thank you for the ongoing emails. They're very, very helpful. There are people who do ask us questions, at least for myself, and your periodic updates via email are really wonderful to send to people who have more questions about the dig that's going on.
Absolutely. And the other thing, too, is one of the things I was gonna do when I came up this week, it's obviously gonna be rescheduled, is kind of meet with some of the local businesses around downtown and just kind of make sure they have the latest updates. And so I'll probably come up maybe on the 19th or the 20th to do some outreach on that, with some of the new updates we have, so everybody kind of knows what's going on and when things are gonna stop for the season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
You bet.
All right, and then turning to our agenda, I would like to move, I feel it's more appropriate timing-wise, to move item three down between item eight and nine, so that no one gets confused, so that we have committee reports with people that were potentially on committees, et cetera. At that point, before we pass future action, welcome our new council member. So on that note, if we could have a roll call.
I am here.
Okay, Councilmember Lucchese.
Here.
And Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
And Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
And Mayor Bryan.
I'll now open general public comment for this evening. It's a chance for any member of the public to comment on city business on any item that is not on the regular agenda. So anything generally or anything that's on the consent agenda for tonight, please come to the podium or if you're on Zoom, hit the raise your hand button. There'll be a lot of pre-mits. Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none in the room, none on Zoom, I will close public comment for this evening. Moving to staff and council comments. City manager, would you like to begin?
Sure. Over the last couple of weeks, so Juliana and I worked on a grant, and we did submit that grant for Proposition 64, which is cannabis money for $2.2 million, $910,000. And so that has been submitted, and they have accepted it, so hopefully we make the cut.
Dustin, you have a little voice. I wanna hear everything you say.
Oh, I'm...
I do.
You wanna hear everything I say? All right. We submitted a $2.910,000 grant.
I got that.
From cannabis funding for Proposition 64. We're gonna utilize part of the requirements of the grant for youth education, law enforcement support, code enforcement, fire flow improvements, forest management. We can get some, like, permitting software, and what else do we... That's pretty much it, right?
I think so, yes.
And that's the bulk of it, anyway.
This is a competitive grant?
Yeah, well, kind of sort of not really. So the Prop 64 funds are from the statewide cannabis tax that's collected at the retail sale and distribution points for cannabis. They are having a really hard time getting enough people to actually use the funds. So it is competitive, but not enough people apply to it on an annual basis or a three-year basis to actually expend all of the funds.
So we have a really good chance of getting it?
Yeah, most likely we will. And actually, other jurisdictions like the city of Mount Chasta, which submitted previously under the other rules, are resubmitting now because they went from a $1 million allocation over three years to a $3 million allocation over three years, and they expanded.
Over five, five years.
Five years, thank you. Forgot about that. So they're basically just trying to give the money away. So over 68% of jurisdictions within the state of California are not eligible for this grant because they do not permit cannabis in any way, shape, or form, and so it leaves the rest of the jurisdictions that have legalized some form of cannabis sale and growth to basically just get these funds.
I wanna coin that phrase, kind of, sort of, not really.
All right. Well, thank you guys for the hard work.
Yeah, and also, as you can see, it's heavily snowing outside. Snow removal, we've put out, we're having issues with vehicles not getting off the roadways for plowing purposes, and so we have put out warnings on the primary routes and to help try and allow us to get the roads clean. We've been struggling to get the vehicles moved, and it's just been, it's been a real headache. We've, other than that, I believe Bryan is out right now doing main routes, but they'll be back out probably at 4:00 AM tonight or tomorrow morning.
Any questions of our city manager?
Well, one comment on the cannabis grant. Dunsmere said yes in 2018. 60% of the voters had taxed unregulately. The tax part for Dunsmere, I think, is still something that's up in the air. That is, to be competitive with other communities in Siskiyou County that have said yes, weed, Mount Chasta, we need to make sure that we have a taxing structure that doesn't disadvantage the green economy in Dunsmere.
Thank you for the comment. All right, any additional questions or comments? Thank you so much. Sergeant Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything in particular to report tonight. The city seems to be in good shape. The crime's down. I've been on nights the last few months. It's hard to find a pedestrian lurking around at night to chat it up with, which is a good thing. Everybody's in bed sleeping, or at least not stealing, which I love, so.
Let's move into council comments. Councilman Art, would you like to begin?
Happy to, Mr. Mayor, and I see the bottles of champagne, so I'm going to be brief and limit my comments to three thank-yous. I wanna thank the voters of the city of Dunsmere for putting up with me since I moved here 15 years ago. As some of you know, I rolled in in 2008, and at that time, there were three empty seats on this body, and nobody wanted to serve. And so I got recruited by then-Mayor Linda Guzman. I didn't know anybody in Dunsmere. Nobody in Dunsmere knew me, but okay, would you take one of the three seats? Yes, I will. And that led to me becoming mayor in 2010. I had a council behind me that was regarded as one of the best councils ever because we were willing to take on water and sewer infrastructure as the first step in saying this community matters. And I know, I mean, the voters recall four-fifths of the city council in 2010, and that's their right. That's how democracy works. But I'm very pleased that I got another chance in 2018. I worked hard to try to convince the voters that this city, this community, is worth it, and they trusted me, and I've tried to do my best to be faithful to them over the last four years, and I hope we continue the process of working together rather than being at cross purposes with each other. I know it's going to happen. I wanna thank my fellow council members. I wanna thank the staff with the notion that's one of the hottest chairs, you know, in Siskiyou County, as it is in other cities. But here again, COVID was difficult. Finding a competent city manager that believes in a community of 2000, as competitive as it is, we're very, very lucky to have the support we have from the Sheriff's Department, the support we have from the city manager and his staff, and I think the notion that courtesy and goodwill trumps divisiveness and selfishness is one of the values that I hope moves forward. My third thank you is to the growing business community in Dunsmere. If you put yourself in the front of the parade and you look back and nobody's following you, that's a pretty small parade. But in fact, I'm involved with 15 businesses in Dunsmere, both for-profit and nonprofit, and those people that were willing to take a risk and bet their time and treasure that Dunsmere's gonna be a success, I am so, so grateful to you. And I think those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Art.
Yes, Peter?
Councilmember Lucchese.
Just working on the grants with Dustin. We have not heard back from Cal OES yet, but I think that's a good thing because other jurisdictions that have applied got a second comment letter and wanting more information. We did not, which is a good sign. And just for the general public, that would fund a full-time disaster planning and hazard mitigation professional at the city for five years, no match. So that would be a full-time person who would be assisting us with green waste days, fire resilience, flood, snowstorms, stuff like that. So that's really exciting. Hopefully, we'll hear next week if we are awarded or not, and turn that around and hopefully have someone hired by April, as they want us to turn that around very quickly. Other than that, just kind of going into kind of research mode on a couple of different things, that's it.
Councilman Kaisler.
Yeah, I really got nothing, other than the fact that, Peter, it has been an honor to serve in the ring with you. Thank you for everything that you have done for the city of Dunsmere. I, for one, appreciate all your efforts, even though you've been a pain in the ass. I love you, brother, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilman Kaisler. Vice Mayor Deutsch.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Listen, I have a statement I'd like to read. You and I both know that we had some discussions, and I just wanna clarify a few things. I would like to note for the record that the protocol for selecting the mayor and vice mayor dated back into history, when the mayor and vice mayor are selected at a meeting in December. That did not happen here. The agenda mistaking left that off. As vice mayor, I'm up in the rotation. After seven years on the council, I've been looking forward to the new year and all the projects I have in mind. On Tuesday, when I realized that there was a mistake on the agenda, I reached out to Dustin DePerecier. He told me I should reach out to the mayor, and I did. I was told by him that it didn't matter. We could do that in January. Now, I must confess, and I'll be very clear about this, my interpretation may be wrong, but I wanted to share with you what I'm left with after that. The response left me no other impression that I should not be counting on that rotation taking place, and that further, I would have to wait to January to see what my future held. For the last eight years, one of the strengths of our councils has been the respect that was shown to each member. In that spirit, each year, the roles of mayor and vice mayor rotated, with the end goal of each member who wished to serve as mayor would get an opportunity. That rotation was followed each year. It would be serving as a vice mayor in 2017 and mayor in 2018, the year of the fires. When the new council was elected in 2018, that probably passed on the position to the newly-elected councilwoman Juliana Lucchese. With her, the rotation paused with the full support of her fellow councilmembers. She had done such an incredible job that we all felt the city would be better served with her at the helm for one more year. Then, when it came time for the decision to would be mayor in 2021, I made the motion to get the council back into rotation. I nominated Matthew to be mayor. That rotation was stopped again last year. I won't go into that matter, other than to say there is a lot of information that should be heard on that in the future, but I'm not gonna talk about it here. All to say, it is time to return to the rotation, the rotation that took us from the deaths of 2014 to being lauded for how well we worked together. I bring this up as a current vice mayor. When I got the response from Matthew that it didn't matter, I could not escape the feeling that it didn't matter because we were not going back to the rotation, and I didn't have to worry because I was not gonna be mayor. When I reached out to him with my concern over the rotation, instead of saying that I shouldn't worry, he supported the rotation. He told me not to worry, the decision would be made without malice. It is an honor to serve as mayor. It gives you the opportunity to lead the effort on making Dunsmere's future bright. I've been in the council for seven years. I have served one year as mayor. Councilman Kaisler has been on the council 10 years, served two years as mayor. Both Councilwoman Lucchese and the mayor have been on the council four years and served two years as mayor. Why is it not clear whether the rotation returned or not? This is not a matter of saying, "Do it for me." I'm saying, "Don't do anything to upset the protocol that has kept us in place as a functioning council." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. For my comments this evening, I want to deeply thank the many parties that were involved with the Heinz Street Medium. You may have noticed, there's a beautiful Christmas tree there, Shasta red fir from up on the mountain. The ski park was very generous in helping us select and cut and bring it down from the mountain. Mountain medics volunteered their employees and time and trailer to bring it down, and then the chamber with many volunteers. Big Dave, I think you were involved, and I thank you for that, as well as the city staff in Public Works. Mr. Wilson brought it all together, and we will be having a Campbells in the Canyon celebration this coming Saturday. I believe it starts, is it 5:00 PM? Well, we'll have to get back on that one, but 5:00 PM, okay? And I've heard a special guest from the North Pole may be arriving.
With his wife?
We'd have to ask the vice mayor that.
Okay.
With Mrs. Santa, let's put it that way.
Very good. All right, let's move forward into the committee reports.
Thank you. We did have kind of a little bit of an update on finance. Blake is still working through the audits. He is working with Charlie right now, doing our audit, and he's also getting everything prepped to go. He's had a little bit of an illness coming up, so we're hoping to get Finance Committee back up into a common rotation at the beginning of the next calendar year.
Thank you. Were there any other committees that met? Not a good time of year for holding meetings. All right. Do you don't believe Public Works Building has any updates from the last meeting?
No, I'm waiting on information from the engineer. They have been out, but I have not heard the final. I expect to see something before our first meeting in January.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we should all give a big thank you to our city employees. Brian Wilson and his crew, they've been looking out for us like, I mean, almost 24/7. Everything's been great, and I, for one, I'm very proud of them. I'm grateful to them.
Yep, they certainly do a lot with what little equipment we have in store. There's no more committee reports. Let's move into the approval of the minutes for the November 17th meeting.
Motion to approve minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, and discussion of the motion at hand. Councilman Art.
Well, Wendy and I sort of have this secret arrangement where we believe I'm the only one that reads the minutes, and therefore, I'm the one that tends to make the corrections. But in the minutes, it reports a unanimous vote on the city spending $10,000.
He said no.
Thank you. I want Union Pacific to pay. Put that in there.
All right, with the amendment that Peter voted no and wants Union Pacific to pay.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Friendly amendment, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Did you have any issues with the minutes, Bruce?
No, I was late on my eye.
Okay.
All right, so now we're gonna be reinserting what was item three, Declaration of the Election, Certification, and Swearing of New Council Members. But before we do that, I would like to thank Councilman Art, both his time in the last four years and since moving to town, for his unfailing service and visionary leadership, believing that this town can be more than its past. You know, he always asks the trick question, if you didn't know it, Riba Coon, "Our future is our past." What does that mean? Do you believe it? Peter has probably led the fight in the last 20 years for preserving our architectural and natural assets. He's certainly been a voice for that on council, but he wouldn't be doing this if he didn't truly feel and lead our town towards having a brighter future than one that's exclusively dependent on one global industry that's based on movement of goods or extraction of resources. He believes in a balanced world where everyone can thrive and has certainly put his own time and efforts in that direction. So it's my great honor as mayor to present to him a plaque, commemorate his time on city council, and what's more?
Oh!
One of these shiny gold things.
Oh! Was it made in the USA?
Choo-choo!
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I wanna do is I go back to the audience chair. I do wanna take my little name tag, and the name tag for Devin Warner is still over there. Devin is in my heart, and I would like to take the name plaque for Devin Warner as well.
I think that's appropriate. There's no objections?
Thank you.
Not me.
Thank you, Councilman Art. We have a round of applause. All right, now moving into item three, Declaration, or turn it into new item, swearing, Declaration of Election Certification and Swearing of New Council Members.
This is Wendy's honor.
Okay, you guys.
All right.
So on November 28th, we did get results back from Laura Bynum, who's our county elections clerk, and the votes came in at... Oh, Peter, you had to go out with a bang, huh? So the following votes were cast. I'll read them in order of quantity. So with 333 votes, Michael C. Clarno.
Yeah, buddy!
Yeah. With 316 votes, Matthew Bryan. With, with 316 votes, Matthew Bryan. With 286 votes, Councilwoman Juliana Lukeysey. And Mr. Amit Tassi at 209. And now if you would like to all stand and I'll do your swearing ins.
That's usually done in the front there. So you got a good picture if you want to get out the front of it there.
Yeah. Come on out in front.
You got a good picture with Wendy there in front making the hands up and all that kind of stuff.
Face the camera, Michael. We need to see that pretty mug.
So we're gonna raise our right hand and then say, "I will swear." "I will swear."
"I am Brian."
"Do someone swear or affirm?"
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 "That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will, that I swear to support, quote."
"Support and defend."
"Support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
I think we did it all the same. We all repeat together.
Yeah. Okay.
"That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"Against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"Against all enemies, foreign and domestic."
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And that I take this obligation freely."
"Take this obligation freely."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"And that I will well and faithfully discharge."
"That I will well and faithfully discharge."
"Duties upon which I am proud to undertake." "And time and time again." "I will present your certificate."
Congratulations.
Good job, Wendy. Our own mod squad. Congratulations, you guys. Good job, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, pretty sure. I think we get them every time.
All right. Well, welcome, Councilmember Clarno.
Do you want to scoot over?
Yeah, sure.
Shower.
All right. For your first vote on city council, Mr. Clarno, we have the consent agenda this evening. We have the check registry from November 12th through December 2nd. We have the approval of the 2023 Schedule Regular City of Dunsborough City Council meeting dates and times. Find that in the agenda packet, typically following our pattern of first and third Thursdays at 6:00 PM with the exception of one holiday day that fell too close, correct?
Correct.
All right. And then we can approve or modify local transportation fund claim form and appoint delegates to the Siskiyou County Solid Waste Management Joint Powers Authority. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. There you go, Michael.
Second. Oh, you wanted to do a thing. Why don't you go ahead, Michael? I'll retract my second.
I'll second that.
There you go.
Any discussion on the motion at hand?
No, sir.
See none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously?
It's official, Michael, you're in.
You're not going to say welcome to the party?
Welcome to the party!
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So as already mentioned earlier, sorry, we have no public hearing, old business or new business. It was of great enough importance to be addressed before January, first meeting in January. We will not be having our regularly scheduled meeting this next Thursday due to availability close to the holidays and a lot of things wouldn't be moving forward in that time. Anyway, for future agenda items, there will be a number of items coming up that the city will need to be addressing because it's a long time between these meetings. And we will of course be addressing appointment of our new mayor, vice mayor and committee appointments at the next meeting. Are there any additional items that council would like to direct to have on the agenda?
I was preparing a letter for you to sign and us to vote on for Union Pacific notification policies for disasters and I apologize, I did not have it done for this meeting because I was off. I thought we were meeting last week and then next week, so I apologize. I'll have that ready for the first meeting in January.
I'm, I'm very supportive of that. Hearing no other items. Thank you so much for those who joined from Zoom. Please stay safe and warm.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Before we adjourn, I would like to make a point of interest. If we look at the pictures, I don't know if you guys can see them, but that Galaxy J3V, that's Michael Clarno's mama. And that is the proudest look on a woman's face I've seen in a while. Hi, Andrea, how you doing?
Hi, Andrea.
All right. Duly noted, Big Dave. And for those that are here with us this evening, we will have a small reception, both to celebrate the involvement of Councilman Art. Pictures.
Oh, yeah, unveiling the pictures.
To celebrate the involvement of Councilman Art on council the last four years, to welcome Councilman Clarno aboard and to unveil the wonderful pictures donated by Ron MacLeod, our town historian. And I'll remind everyone that the hotel in there, the Shasta Hotel, was built by the people who own the hotel in Tombstone and they sold the Emporium Hotel for over $800,000 back then and came to Dunsborough and built this one. But Ron had a fascinating 15-minute presentation. He unfortunately cannot be with us here tonight, but I'm sure we'll be proud to see these pictures hung in the council chamber going forward, so.
Mr. Mayor, we, first of all, I'm sorry that I can't be there. I fell down my steps. I really can't move. I'm sitting on my couch, so, but I think that it is vital, crucial, I can't think of the right word, monumental, but I think that we as a council need to do something to have to honor Ron MacLeod and everything that he has done. He sold the hardware store, he's fixing the goaway, and I think we owe it to that man to do something for him. I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I think we can put our heads together and come up with something deserving or at least something to show our appreciation if it is not deserving. All right. Any further business before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Welcome to the party, Michael. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Dave.
Look at that face, Andrea. Oh my God, you're so.
I love it.
I don't know if you guys saw it, but I was just saying.
Oh. I did, yes. We were gonna, I was gonna play kind of house at like our dog was flipping door from all the snow, so like it's just still sitting there. We haven't moved it. Had to go around it into like the actual.
Let's have a little peek inside outside.